I can use one.
Use the mic, Rick.
So, the purpose of this was really to let you get an idea of what the form-based zoning ordinance might look like, what the components of it might be. And what Chris has done tonight is, so this would be sort of the appendix for what we're talking about tonight, Chris has put together a memo which takes us a little bit further, applying the form-based zoning considerations to Portsmouth specifically. But before we get started on that, did anybody have any general response to that material? Any ideas that came out of it in terms of how you thought it might have, might be applicable? Do you want to cut off anything before we get into our discussion?
I guess I had a question because, and you know, I looked through it, I really like the overall concepts. I'm wondering in practice, because obviously, as it says every time, the photos are illustrative only. And you couldn't possibly have something that would show the full range of ways that people could imagine it. Do you find that people get hung up, or that it's problematic for people to get hung up on the diagrams, the graphics and the photos because they misinterpret the flexibility that they have? I mean, is that an issue? And, or is this just a little excerpt and you would actually have like a Sears catalog of, you know, here a 25 townhouse? I mean, how do people do that?
Well, I'll respond first and then Chris, because Chris has more experience with this. But my reaction would be that, I understand what you're saying, but the one photo that just says, well, this is, this is the only way you do it. Because it doesn't, it makes, it may seem like a modern building and you're looking for something more traditional.
Exactly.
That's particularly the kind of thing. It's got a flat roof and you want a peak roof or something like that. So I would say that the plan view information and the diagrammatic information is the type of thing that's really important to have so you can, so it can be very clear. And my preference would be to have a number of examples, you know, rather than one picture, to have a number of examples. In this particular case, the document that we took it from is an area that is all new development that's going in.
Okay.
So it's not a redevelopment area, so there's no context at all for what's going in. So it really doesn't matter that much. But I think in a case where you have much more diversity, it's better to have many different examples. Chris, do you want to?
Chris, it's a great question. And I think that actually as we work through the memo and the questions that I'm posing to you today, and we get some input from the planning board, I think we're going to get towards answering that. But some of the certain things that are actually regulations would be the building location, the amount of transparency of the windows, et cetera. And those are all things that we're going to talk about tonight. And some of the things that, you know, as we sat down to start to craft this, we realized that we had to have this step before we brought you some actual ordinance language, because there are too many policy directions that we needed before we got started. But there are, as Rick said, there are the diagrams in these, such as this diagram here. This and this table illustrates some actual regulations that are prescriptive. So they do say, you know, you must meet this. And in the photo, you know, your zoning ordinance, if we do a section on form-based standards, doesn't have to have photographs.
And then just as a follow-up, how have you seen people handle or incorporate the kind of HDC stuff that would come up in a more, the level of design detail? Or do you just not try to get that into this type of form base? Are these two different things that overlap with each other?
Well, I would say, I think we have not been thinking about using this in an HDC district. I think we were thinking about this as an area that is much more changeable, and particularly the corridors and so forth. I think it would be, I think it really is an alternative to the HDC. I don't think you would do both of those together.
Okay, that's my question.
I guess a very broad conceptual question. In 25 words or less, how does this differ from our existing zoning? Let me explain that question. We have setbacks, we have frontage, we have building height, we have parking requirements, thank you. We have uses, we have districts. How does this dovetail into what we presently have for zoning regulations? Or does this basically replace, or what we're talking about is replacing what we have?
The concept would be to replace what you have on a, on an area-by-area basis. So if you, if you wanted to implement this type of zoning, you would do it essentially as a, we're suggesting that you might look at it as an overlay district, and that would replace certain of the underlying regulations, not all of them, but certain of them. And the way it really differs, one way it really differs is it's much more prescriptive than your zoning. Your zoning may have a maximum height, and it may have a maximum, a required minimum setback and so forth. This has a required minimum height as well as a maximum. You have to be at least two stories, or you have to be at the street line, you have to head your parking behind. So it's much more specific as to the site and the building design, and as a result pays less, less attention to uses. So your ordinance is extremely detailed with respect to uses and to, with many different features of the, of the development, you know, how far it has to be from something else and so forth. With this, you'd actually be spending much more attention on how the building relates to the street. And in the same way that the Historic District Commission does, but not using the same criteria. You know, just focusing on how it contributes to the character of the community, and somewhat less concerned with what goes on inside it. There's a variety of things that can go on inside it. But you're really more focused on what the building is like.
So would it be fair to describe this then as more, I guess, lenient than our existing zoning?
No. Because it wouldn't let you do a one-story building in a certain location, for example. You'd have to do a two-story building, because that's framing the street. So it's, I would say it's more flexible as to use, but more restrictive as to the shape of the building.
Interesting.
Okay, thank you.
And it's generally described as if you, if you have this balancing act. Typical zoning is, you know, you give this, all this weight to the, to use and some weight, but not as much to design and to form. And form-based zoning still has the comparison, but you're just shifting the balance. So you're paying more attention to what the building contributes to the street and to the community in terms of aesthetics and appearance, and less attention to what goes on inside the building.
So would it be then fair to say that it is more, it gives the plan, it gives the process more leniency in figuring out ultimately what goes in a particular place than our present zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll talk about that a little bit in terms of what that implication might be for definitions of uses, for example.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's good.
Anything else before we get started?
Well, thank you for your patience in going through this. And the way that I've structured this is really to kind of say, we have these kind of four big picture questions that I'd like your input from. And in order to kind of prompt you, at the end of each section, I've said, I've suggested a question, you know, what's the planning board input? You can give me much more input than just the answer to that question, but I'm going to kind of try to bring you back to how we answered that question. And that's how I'd like to proceed through this section, I mean, through the, through the memo. And we've, I've spent some time ordering it in a certain order. You may have questions that are going to pull us to another section, and I'll just try and use my own judgment about how we go through it. I may say, that's a great question, it's question three. And so just to review, just to give you an overview of the questions that we'll be looking at, they're right on the first page of the memo. What are the primary types of form-based districts and what do they look like? Because when we started looking at Portsmouth and the commercial corridors that we're focusing on, they're different from each other. So we immediately said, we're not going to have just one type. Should form-based standards be optional or mandatory? And then should mix, you know, should certain features be required or allowed? And those will get to some of the leniency or flexibility, and really is some policy direction about how this should be applied. Should it be optional to an applicant, or should it be required of the applicant? What uses are appropriate for each type of zoning district? And we're, we've mocked up kind of a use table that cross-references the building form types, which are actually based on, literally by, you know, by reference to this, your appendix. So that cross-references those building form types with your existing districts in the two types that we're suggesting, the two form, form-based districts. And then we have some kind of follow-up questions about use categories in particular. And then finally, the last question, which could be the first question, but we, it's kind of, as content goes, as the meaty discussion goes, we didn't want to get hung up on that, but should it be an overlay district or a base zoning district? So general business in Portsmouth is a base or underlying zoning district. An overlay district is something that's very discreet in particular, like the downtown overlay district, the historic district, something like that. So you may hear us, me or Rick, talk about an overlay, just to preview our recommendation, does it be an overlay? And we just kind of needed a way to kind of shortcut in some sense through the, through the memo. So if you hear me saying overlay, that's, that's why. So if you take your memo and open it up, we've formatted it so that you have kind of pages that go together. So you should have page two and page three kind of open at the same time, if you would, for our first kind of review of the primary types and what they look like and where they might be. Part of this got to the question, as Rick and I sat down to talk about this, is we've talked about commercial corridors, and we've talked about two in particular in the zoning audit, which I've been asked to focus on, Islington Street corridor and Lafayette Road or Route One corridor. It is also possible to have, talk about residential. And then the other thing that came about in talking about how this might apply, and this is trying to give some guidance, is are these going to be linear areas? Corridors, kind of makes you think of linear. Or are they kind of nodal, or that's a kind of fancy planning term for, you know, are they based around a center of activity, or intersection, or a neighborhood? Like, is it Islington Street, or is it Islington Street and its other pair? Does it go over the whole block? Does it stretch over? So that is how we came up. And there's also a matter of scale. Corridor, as we're using it here, is a larger-scale area with wider rights of way, higher travel speeds, and a different sort of commercial activity. So just to go through them, the neighborhood-based form standards are for small streets. And so I've broken that down, kind of the characteristics and examples of locations for each of these types. Again, I'm focusing mostly on the neighborhood and the corridor. We put residential in this table to kind of show you that it could apply. For the rest of the memo, we don't really get back to the residential, because we're not, we're not proposing any specific standards or locations for that at this time. But we wanted to keep it in your mind. So an example of kind of a neighborhood district, a couple that we've come up with, Islington Street, downtown, northern tier. We're actually proposing that it be an Islington Street specifically in this area. But those are other, the northern tier and downtown are other examples of commercial activity with relatively slow street vehicle speeds and relatively small width streets. So the whole scale is different in those areas than it would be, than it is on Lafayette And so you see, I've put some of the kind of vehicle volume and the on-street parking, commercial activity. These are things just again, to try and generally say, if you were to have this overlay district, or you apply this district, where, where might it go? And these are generally the characteristics that we see. In addition to Lafayette Road, Woodbury Avenue is also a place that potentially could be, have a corridor designation applied. So if that helps you kind of imagine and think of the scale and the types of development.
Perhaps you might want to call it Upper Woodbury Avenue.
I was just about to choke. Take that back.
Laura, we didn't mean it.
I think based on a whole series of things we've just talked about, it would be exactly the opposite, that City Council has been dealing with, and that will change the traffic calming and will treat, it just happened, that will treat Woodbury in a different way. That's what David's referring to.
Yeah, which Woodbury Avenue you're talking about?
Right.
Talking about the shopping center.
Okay.
The shopping center area, way to the west.
Why don't we just annotate that as, for now, as Upper Woodbury Avenue?
Quick question. And on the vehicle volume, you go high parentheses greater than 5,000 ADT.
Sorry. We try, Rick tried to get me to get rid of some acronyms. Average daily traffic?
Okay. That's an individual car passing an individual.
And that's just, that's just, for the purposes of this table, that's just a random, not random, but an arbitrary cutoff point, but yeah.
All right, that's fine.
I think that, I think, is it 7,000 on Islington Street? Do we know that?
I would say your 5,000 is about right.
It's a typical measurement that traffic engineers use to, if you were to look at a chart of all the volumes of traffic that you're, so it's a little bit like miles per hour, but in terms of number of vehicles, average daily trips. So again, before we get to our recommendation about where are we going to apply these precisely, I guess I'm asking for your input, are these the appropriate types, characteristics and locations of the form-based standards that you'd like to see, knowing that you don't know everything about?
One thing I'm confused about is that we have historically referred to Islington Street as the corridor, and yet you describe it in a neighborhood as opposed to a corridor.
Rick and I talked about this for quite a while. You could name these type A, B and C. You could name them corridor, corridor light, or low corridor, or.
Narrow road, wide road.
Narrow corridor, wide corridor. The names are my suggestions.
Yeah.
They, we can change the names if they are confusing for you.
I think.
I appreciate that you called it a corridor. And Rick said the same thing to me, and I.
They're both corridors.
I kind of, that's one of the reasons that I'm giving you these characteristics, to kind of distinguish what do I mean when I say neighborhood. But again, it could be narrow.
But it just as easily could be, yeah, it could be a corridor.
Correct.
Right, good.
Again, it could be A, B, C, one, two, three.
Just needed to come up with two different names, just to.
Yes.
What are the limits you're talking about? I don't want to get too specific if we don't want to at this point, but like, Islington Street, I think we're probably talking about the start of Islington at Congress, but what's the other terminus? What's the?
We were sort of bringing it down to the bypass, you know, just, just, and so I guess that one of the questions, above the table there, when, and Chris mentioned this, it could be either linear or nodal. One of the questions we need to think about is, recognizing that we haven't even decided that we're going to adopt this, this approach to zoning, but if we were to do it, would we want to do it along the entire length of a road, or along several blocks, or just focus it in one area? For example, around Bartlett Street, you know, that area, near where the train bridge is and CBS and everything?
I mean, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking for Islington Street. But I guess on that note, I would add Maplewood from the same intersection down to the bypass again. Seems to be those are two, what you call neighborhood, we would call them corridors.
You mentioned one of your questions with the board is locations. And in the debates that we'll probably have, in the earlier conversation we had about form-based zoning, when it was first broached, City Attorney was here, and he, Mr. Sullivan seemed to allude to the fact that we are not in form-based zoning now, so to try to mix and match, or to try to completely overhaul it into form-based zoning would be problematic. And I think that's when we started talking about overlays. But looking at these two different, however you want to name them, types, either neighborhood or corridor, in Islington Street, the downtown and the northern tier, you have a lot of older buildings. And that is going to be more likely to be resistant to neighbors, to businesses. At this point, we're really not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're not tearing down the zoning ordinance and building it back up again. We're just trying to find at least some means of, some overlays where it would work. And I'm thinking that you look at Lafayette Road and Woodbury Avenue, where the builders themselves are probably going to, once they go into a new lot, tear down the existing building and build it back up again. So it's more likely to garner cooperation from everybody involved, rather than try to start a fight, I think. And I think, that's maybe a more extreme viewpoint, but I think it would be more likely to be successful. As daunting a task as Lafayette Road and Woodbury Avenue sound, I think over the long term, it may be easier for us to start our first overlays there than in someplace where you have residences and business and everybody mixing in, and business is not changing that much over five to 10 or 15 years. Where on Lafayette Road and Woodbury Avenue, they change at the blink of an eye, and we have applications in front of us all the time. That's going to be more of an opportunity for us to see what works and what doesn't, I think.
I think that's, I think that's a really interesting point. I don't agree with it. But I, but it's, I think we need to build from.
Those points.
I need, I think we need to build from points like that. And a cup, as you said that, it occurred to me that, looking forward, Islington, I mean, what, I think what you said right now is true. You know, the churn is going to be pretty obvious on like Woodbury or Lafayette, because we've, I mean, you, within the short time I've been on the planning board, we've seen a lot of Woodbury and Lafayette. But if you think of the changes that are coming to downtown that we know about, Islington just becomes an entirely different thing. But to me, it becomes both a different corridor and a different set of nodes. And that was one of the things I'm confused about already, is do, you know, within this neighborhood designation, it feels like when you look at Islington, there are nodal things and there are corridor things. And that we might, and that they might have different expectations.
I see that in northern tier as well. I see that more nodal than corridor oriented.
But there might be little corridor elements to it. Northern tier is definitely nodal, but to me, Islington is a corridor with nodes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of what defines it.
And that is what the neighborhood is kind of meant to reflect. And I think, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we struggled with where to put this overlay district or separate based zoning district, and that's kind of where our very specific location recommendation comes in. And it, I guess what I'd like to do, I think these are good questions about the location, and I think it's going to come down to also whether or not it's going to be applied or required, or if it's going to be developer or applicant-driven as an option. So I'd like to hold that, those comments, I mean, they're good comments, but maybe not respond to them, and maybe we can kind of come back to that. Same, if you have comments, I mean, Rick and I are taking notes, but if you have a comment or like that, please don't hesitate to remind us or jot it down.
Can the form change along a linear path? Is that what, is that what you guys were saying? Let's wait?
Yes, it can. And I think when we look at the standards, there are going to be some standards that, for example, for neighborhoods, that you might do a little bit differently. You could add corner standards, in particular things. I think corners are actually important in both, so I think that you can emphasize corners in different ways. And again, we haven't done a full, because we're not writing the ordinance yet, we haven't done kind of a full longer list of absolutely all of the standards, but that's kind of the next item for discussion, is here are some of the standards that we're thinking about. And I guess what I'm hearing is, let's talk about corners too, which we haven't done so much in the standards that I put forward, so.
Yeah, just so we're clear, I think we're on the same page. I think what Chris and I are saying are that from start of Islington downtown to Bartlett Street would be a different form than Bartlett Street to the bypass. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, and maybe there are even some subsets of that. And I don't know how deeply you go into subsets. I think that's a question for me in this whole approach of whether you try to, you know, start splitting things off and saying, if this, then this set, if this, then this set, within a larger piece. Or is that just two?
This can get really, very complicated very quickly, and you know, Bob Sullivan's going to kill me because he wants the orders to be smaller, and he's going to make them longer, so.
That's actually, yeah, that's actually an interesting point, because I think historically the cities tried to be a little more laissez-faire. These are where we don't want you to go, feel free to do what you need to in here. And have tried basically not to say too many no's. So an overlay may be a good approach. Taking this table though, just since we're sort of in an early discussion stage, I'd just like to say what I see distinguishing a lot of these corridors is, and something that isn't potentially addressed perhaps adequately, might be the width of the corridor. Because that is what really defines Islington Street. Your vehicle speeds, for example, are much higher than even the posted, at least on the areas we're dealing with. I know these are general guidelines, but I think the neighborhood's a good designation of it, but perhaps recognizing what it is that makes it that. Because on Islington Street, you build to the lot line. On Lafayette Road, you stay away from the lot line. On Maplewood Avenue, because it's developed over time, you've got both, and those all add into the form.
Maybe just adding the words neighborhood corridor, business corridor, because that's what it seems to be here, in the sense that.
Well, it's a rose by any other name, whatever you want to call it.
I think we could spend a lot of time talking about the names, and I, I'm not going to discount how important that is ultimately, but maybe rather than take our time. We're really open to all suggestions. Again, every time you say corridor though, and you want to think about, you know, is it more than the corridor, you get a little bit of a problem. So that's, that's one of the reasons that I persuaded Rick to let me say neighborhood here. And thank you, David, with the right of why it should be in here, it is kind of implicit in what we were thinking about.
Exactly.
But we didn't put it down. The other thing that comes up, and this is, I'm sorry.
Hey, did you have?
Yeah, I had a question, I guess, sort of belatedly, an outgrowth of what Rick was talking about, a general question. I guess about sort of the philosophy behind form-based zoning, in terms of this balance of sort of form or design versus use. If there's somehow an assumption there that, you know, mixed uses will sort of happen within the various districts? I mean, I assume in general that's a goal, at least it is for me. So if we're sort of discounting that, then, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, so I mean, I know that gets that question number two, but.
That's really, there's a range of things that you can regulate, mixed uses being required is one of them. I think in this, one of the things that we're trying to do is to remove any obstacles, and particularly maybe make it a little bit easier to redevelop, for Islington, or actually, they're both redevelopment sites, whether it's Lafayette or Islington. And so we're wanting to, and so one of the things, item number three, talks about the use table and simplifying the use table, and again, that blends that building form and uses. And there we get into what, what we think is an incentive to development, in addition to building development incentives, like more density or higher heights or more lot coverage, would be that the use categories are much simpler, and there's just less attention paid to uses. So you might have more flexibility if you're using the form base than you would otherwise. And in particular, I think on Islington, that's important, a little bit less so on Lafayette. What I was going to say, just kind of to wrap up this discussion, and I say it in words on item number four, is that we do really have kind of two different goals with these two different locations, Islington Street and Lafayette Road. And that is in Islington Street, Islington Street, my sense is that it's the desire to protect an existing character and enhance it. And on Lafayette Road, it's the desire to change an existing strip commercial and enhance it with different design standards. So in a way, I think then the form-based zoning is a good way to do both of those goals, but we, it is interesting to kind of recognize that we have one where we're protecting and enhancing, and one where we're trying to change or offer this as an incentive to change. So they are just, I recognize that they're, they're different, but I think that this can get at that. But that might be something that you think about in the back of your minds as you're thinking about locations, and these locations in particular. Is this the right way to do that? Or are there other things that need to happen? Okay?
Counselor.
Something that David said, within this table that you have, there really isn't anything about landscaping or positioning of the building. And, you know, and one thing David mentioned was, one of the things that characterizes the neighborhood is the close to the street versus the, and I think we like that on Islington. I don't know if we've.
Right.
What we want to do in the quarter, but that would seem to be an entry that we'd want to.
My shorthand for that is the second-to-last row, the existing pedestrian-oriented and scaled buildings. I can elaborate on that to make sure.
That's what you mean, though?
But that is what I mean when I say that. But that's a good, good point. I mean, it could be actually, they could be separated. It could be pedestrian-oriented buildings and then buildings that. It could be pedestrian oriented buildings and then buildings that front the street directly. I mean, those, those could be distinguished. Both of them are existing in Islington or neighborhoods and lack, lacked in the corridors. Okay, so I heard some, that was a good discussion. And I think the one thing that I haven't thought of and I don't know enough to, to comment on is the idea of Maplewood from Islington to the bypass. And so we'll have to, have to keep that in mind as, as something to-
I don't think it's, it's in a bad shape right now as, as Islington is, but it seems like it has the potential, it's the same kind of makeup.
Okay.
Perhaps what we could do is look at it as, I think the node idea is a good idea, but a good portion of it's sort of in the northern tier.
Right.
But we're sort of addressed up to the railroad tracks.
Which way are you, are you talking about Maplewood all the way from the northern tier to the bypass or just from Islington?
I was taking it from the railroad tracks out.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
An ironic-
It's downtown.
Right, and that's sort of covered.
Yeah.
But it is one of the primary corridors.
Okay. Good. Let's move on to page four, if you would. Again, we can go back or you can ask a question. You can say, oh, this reminded me of something that we discussed earlier. But generally, what I, let me just summarize. Generally, what I heard you say is you're not sure about the names, but these seem like the appropriate with some additions to the table. These seem like good characteristics and appropriately kind of things that we should be looking at for the form base.
Yeah, and how, I, how, how specific should we get in terms of additions to the table?
Let's, let's get through some of the standards that I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if you had sort of a general.
Let, let, I'd say let's hold on that and then if you have other specific edits, and this may be something that you need to kind of go through the meeting, think about it, chew it over a little bit, shower, think about it, oh, my best ideas come in the shower, and then kind of come back to it and say, oh, okay, this makes more sense. Now I understand really what you're going at. It is the kind of topic that it takes a little bit to kind of get it rolling around in your head. And once it's there, you kind of get it. So I do want to encourage you to say, okay, I need to go back to something that we talked So this, the, the second question is very important to deal with whether or not the form-based standards, and again, we're kind of trying to, we're not calling it a form-based overlay because we haven't named it a form-based overlay yet, but whether these standards should be optional. And when I say optional, I mean at the applicant's option. So that is somebody would come in and say, I'd like to redevelop this, this store on Islington Street. I'd like to redo that and I want to do a four-story mixed-use building and I'd like to evoke the form-based standards. And so when I evoke or when I use that portion of the zoning ordinance, I get the bonuses that come with it, but I also have to comply with the design standards. But it was my option. That is, I'm in this area and I have the option of using it. Or I could default to the base district that I'm in. So that's what I mean when I say should it be optional or applicant optional. And the other kind of way to approach that is should the form-based districts or overlay areas be mapped and the requirements in them be, apply to all properties.
What are the, what are the pros and cons? I guess my first question is here, you're throwing them up there, what, why give-
The, the, this is part of balance, a different kind of balance. It's balancing the desire to either protect the character or change the character as a goal and how much you'd like to see that goal attained. The risk of having it be applicant option is that you may not see that goal achieved. And I, I generally talk about a planning period whenever I'm talking about reaching goals. So that's about 20 years. So you, you risk a less of a, a higher success rate, most likely in my mind. So that is the biggest risk. The, the risk to applying it and making the standards mandatory is that you may get feedback from the development community or the property owners that these are standards that they don't agree with for X, Y, Z reasons and they don't want to be forced to do something. So you risk kind of weighing, how do you balance wanting to achieve your goals with how much you're going to put onto the development, developers or the, of the property owners?
And part of it, or just before you, but part of it is a matter of culture too, because as David said, the zoning historically in the city has been permissive and form-based zoning becomes much more prescriptive in some ways. So you're changing the way you do business and that may risk a backlash.
That was sort of my question. I was going to ask, David, do you think Attorney Sullivan would be, have less heartburn over?
I think you can find the right balance. In other words, you can have form-based that can be very, very, very strict, but you can also have form-based that encourages but still required. And I think our zoning historically has been rather encouraging, but it's picked out very significant areas where it says you will, you shall not go beyond this. So I think you can blend it.
Yeah, my, just my concern is, you know, you have the last sentence on the first paragraph on that page, "The risk of a policy as optional as the applicant is that the goals may not be achieved within the planning horizon." And what I see happening 20 years out is, nice building, nice building, nice building, same as before, nice building, nice building. And we had conversations about developments on Islington Street. And one of the arguments we made a few years ago when we decided as a planning board in a site review hearing not to demolish a building was it would affect the nature of the corridor. And I think what we do if we sort of make it, you know, you know, encouraging as opposed, not mandatory but optional, I think you're going to have to have a base at least of, it's got to be required, especially if you're dealing with permanency. But, you know, I agree with you, John, in the sense that let's give people a chance to do the right thing. And I think if we have some options involved in that with a base of requirements, I think we would probably be better off.
A base with options. I mean, I think that we talked about, you know, the northern tier, look at that rezoning. I think we, we did a base with options. And I think everybody, you know, if you go over and above, incentives kick in or-
Right.
But I think-
You mean the northern tier will be developed by the time we get the inspections prepared?
But I think in this case, John, we're, we're dealing with form-based zoning as the base, where before we were dealing with our zoning ordinance as the base and everybody was, was, had been reading that for years, you know? So now we're dealing with a whole new approach. We're going to introduce you to this in this overlay. And by the way, our old zoning ordinance doesn't apply. Here's the base in this overlay. And now here's the options that you can fiddle with to see what works with your particular business.
Right.
You know, and that may or may not have some, you know, people who disagree. But I think if we're, if our goals are to be met, that's the only way to do it.
I like the base and I like the flexibility. I mean, you want a little bit, yeah.
Now that we have 10-year time, term limits for the planning board, do you still feel that?
Well, considering, considering the fact that I'm, I'm the guy that's been here the longest and I'm up for a reappointment next year, I might not want to say much. But considering it would take five votes to put, to put me on before and now it only takes six, I'm not too worried.
Just all grandfathered, by the way.
Just to recognize that I have a series of questions in this item and that you may not want to comment on the mandatory or optional before you know what kinds of standards I'm talking about. So I've kind of, just to, not to cut off discussion, but let me direct your attention to table 2A and table 2B on page five. And again, we have that kind of, hopefully you have your, your open on kind of like a book. And, and so this is talking about the types of standards that we're contemplating and then what those standards might be. And again, these are just for discussion, but just to give you an idea about the kinds of things that, that are done in other form-based codes. Again, breaking down the neighborhood versus the corridor. And then also table 2B is the incentives. So again, these incentives can be, you're, if you're, if you're required to do these things, then the incentives apply. But this, the incentives are also what might get you to do it if it is optional. And I haven't done as much detail on exactly what the increase would be because it's still a concept. But I did in table 2A, if you, if, with your permission, I'll just walk through some of them just to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about. So one of the first things, as Rick said, is the concept of a build-to line instead of a setback line. It's a build-to that is coming up to the setback. And the way that that is frequently measured is by a percentage of the building frontage or the facade at the, that line. So the build-to line may be no, three feet from the right of way. So 75% of a building has to come up to that line. And so you can have jogs and you can have little indentations, but a certain percentage of the building comes up. And 75 or 80% is typical in a kind of main, if I want to, if I can use the term main street type of development. 50% in the corridor is what I'm suggesting. So currently, we don't have anything like this. You have, actually, you have to setback. And again, we are not defining exactly where that build-to line is going to be on the corridor and that's going to depend a little bit on your right of way and if we still need this 100-foot setback. But the concept of you're going to bring buildings to where pedestrians are is, is that build-to line is the first one.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, this, when you say 75% of the building frontage, you're actually talking about 75% of the frontage of the lot, correct? Because that, in other words, that's to keep you from having big gaps for pedestrians.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, so it's-
Well, there's, there are different ways to do it. You can do 75% of the building or you can do 75% of the lot. Frontage must be covered by a building.
Yeah. If you said 75% of the building, if you did it a certain way, it could be a very narrow building.
Yes, and you, this comes with kind of a variety of, this is actually quite a hard standard to write in, or in legal format, but I just want to make sure everybody understands the concept. This is actually something that is illustrated, I think, pretty well in the standards that you have here from Weymouth, South Weymouth. And again, they're, they're, they have an illustration of, let's, if you go to the anchor retail, that's the easiest one for me, I think, to explain. They show the building is all the way up.
They're not numbered unfortunately.
Sorry.
Towards the back, Tony.
Towards the back. Sorry, they're not. So this illustration, the street is kind of in gray or shaded and you can see the building is, you know, very different from you might think of in a typical shopping center. It doesn't have a parking lot in front of it and then the building. The building is hugging the street is the one way you could talk about it. But you can see it has an indentation here and so that's allowing for variation in buildings. And so this is a build, this, well, let's just say that the anchor retail kind of stops there. This is much more than 50%, which is what I was kind of describing for the big corridor, as it were. But anyway, that, that just gives you a, a sense of what that is.
Question on, question on it though. You say 75% of the building frontage is the maximum. What, what, if you, if it's based on the line that you set?
Correct.
Why would you then set up a line where you'd only have 50%?
Well, because you're not being as strict for buildings to front. You're not saying, you, you're, you're allowing for a greater gap, for example.
But if you really want to bring a corridor in-
That's correct. These are, these are numbers that I have, again, I've put these in to give you an idea. And the basic concept, I guess, that I wanted to get forward is that you may have more lenient or different standards for the corridor than you do for the neighborhood form. I could be wrong, you may want different, but these are, I'm just giving you a sense of in my first blush for discussion. And so I'm not necessarily trying to say that we should be debating what these numbers are right now. I want to talk about what these standards are so that you understand what we might be regulating. Yeah.
I have a, I guess, almost like a civil engineering question here. I've always assumed, I've always assumed that parking was in front of buildings for security, security concerns, you know, police being able to drive by and see people in the parking lot. Is there any, is there any, is that a philosophy that's out there or is that just my poor assumption or basis?
I, I would not, you mean, sort of like if the parking were behind, that you couldn't see, the parking lot would be?
It's easier to see when it's right up close to the street.
I haven't heard that. What I have heard more from retailers is they have to have two doors if the parking is behind and they don't, I've heard they don't like to do that. They do when, when they have no other choice, like in an urban neighborhood, an existing urban neighborhood, if you redevelop something, it's pretty common.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't, we weren't enacting zoning that's contrary to our police department.
Public safety. We could get, I, I haven't spoken to them about it.
There's no real issue there. They've under-
Yeah. I, I do think for the corridor, and you went right to the, the one that I think is pretty important, this location of parking is, is extremely important to, to change the corridor characteristic.
I like it.
Yeah, well, kind of along the same, same lines where Tony was going, I'd be really interested in whether there's any research that correlates any of these kinds of corridor things with traffic calming, because that's a big issue in our corridors. And, you know, I don't know if that, I don't expect the answer tonight, but if, if there's anything related to traffic calming, like do, do more transparent windows calm traffic more than less transparent windows? Do, you know, do certain kinds of landscaping, do certain kinds of frontage? Because that's an issue that we have, it's just really big and everything we deal with is the traffic calming and it's only going to get worse. So if there's any kinds of standards that we can think about that might have an effect on traffic calming.
Seems like the big one is width of streets, right? Which we saw over here, so.
I, I can't comment right now.
Yeah, right.
I could say a lot of this is oriented towards pedestrian traffic, so, you know, transparency of windows is to enhance the pedestrian environment, so you don't have so many blank walls.
Right, but maybe if there's a lot to see you go slower, I don't know. But, you know, I'm thinking that's just going to be a big issue for us. So any kinds of things we could do, I'm assuming that certain kinds of landscaping may relate to that or, I don't know.
The big one, I think the big one is on-street parking.
Right, or design of the road. I actually, towards the back, we have, it's not a question, but it's a topic of street improvements and street design. And so I'd like to talk about that a little bit more, because I think it's very important for the form base. It's a little bit harder to, you know, you can't put it in the zoning ordinance and so, but I do think it's important for the city to consider how, because it's, it's very important to these, these forms. Minimum building height, Rick talked about, you guys have a maximum building height. So this is a real paradigm shift, just like the build-to line is you must build to a certain height and that is to main, kind of maintain kind of the, the feel. So on Islington Street, not the one-story building.
Like a skyline.
It's kind of like a skyline. It's like, you might call it a cornice line is the way that architects talk about it.
Sculpted rooftops.
Sculpted rooftops.
Rooftop line.
Yeah. So again, I've, this 22 feet is a, a standard I've used, I've used in the past. It has actually become, as the main street shoppies, I like to call them, have been more popular with new retail development, they are often building to that 22-foot height. It doesn't give you, you could do two stories. Usually that second story is in mezzanine where offices can be. They're usually, they can be vacant though, or they can be, inside they build up all the way up to the ceiling. So they're just high, high ceiling areas. So I'm saying that that's important for the neighborhood, but maybe not so important for the corridor. They generally are already tall. Orienting the entrance to a street or a corner, requiring that, allowing projections. So these are the kinds of standards that, that we're talking about. And what I don't have, other than this orienting the entrance to a corner, I don't have other corner type emphasis. Another type of corner emphasis would be requiring certain corners to have a, a higher building element, like a tower or a clock tower or a distinctive element. To be honest, my experience is that's usually done in a kind of a gateway. Like if you had a building on the parking lot at Islington and Maplewood, that would be really nice to have a big corner element. But it, that's something that I could throw out there as what I can think about to get at corner nodes and intersection emphasis.
Going to the 22-foot height thing, to me, a single-story building that's 22 feet tall is rather ugly. It's kind of stark.
They're not necessarily ugly or stark.
You know what comes to mind is this strawberry bank thing that was proposed. Do you remember that? That had, this may have been before your time, but they actually had what appeared to be a second floor. But it wasn't a second floor. It was just-
Right. If you go to page nine, just, and I'm not saying this is a beautiful building, but it's a, and maybe there would need to be some additional design standards, but there's the appearance of a second story there.
Yeah, but at least that-
It has windows.
Those aren't real windows.
Yeah, but it, I know, but it gives the appearance of, but it's when that, when there's, are no windows and you just have that giant flat wall.
Wouldn't form-based zoning allow more for what you're talking about? It wouldn't be stark because you're not just having a building height, you're saying, well, we want it to look sort of like this and have it this far away and maybe a sculpted
"Well, we want it to look sort of like this, and have it this far away, and maybe a sculpted rooftop."
Well, if...
That's a minimum, don't forget.
And that could be, exactly, that could be a minimum base.
The, the reason to do this in the neighborhood, and again, I'm thinking about Islington Street when I'm throwing this out, is that there is a, there is a cornice line on Islington Street that exists for parts of it. Now, maybe there's not, and you don't want it, all right? But in many areas, like a Main Street area, you want to maintain that. And it's kind of like having similar, like the, the building frontage is the, is the vertical version of this. It's the roof lines are the kind of, you know, the horizontal. If you go, you know, three-story, three-story, one-story, 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 three-story, three-story, you kind of lose that sense of the place, and that's the reason for a minimum height.
Perhaps I could just add one thing on that. What's old is new again. We had minimum building heights in the central business district, and it became a bear, but also became apparent, there was no issue. Nobody wants to build just a few feet. And we haven't had an issue with somebody designing a minimum. This is almost like we're inventing an issue that really isn't that big a thing. The land is so valuable, it's happening.
Good for Lafayette or Woodbury.
The example that I look at is going through New Market, there's a set of New Market, and you've got incredible buildings, these old buildings. And the post office came in and put in a one-story post office set way back in the road, and it's like this huge gap.
Good example.
Unfortunately, we'll never do anything with the federal government.
But that's the kind of, if you, if you have somebody who wants to do a, a fast-food restaurant, or a Blockbuster or something like that.
A, a convenience store.
That's true.
Yep.
If I remember correctly from that debate we had, and I think you were there at the time, we were talking about the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes.
We, we, I think one of the things we talked about was, it looks like a tooth has been taken out of the teeth.
That's exactly what it was.
And I think, and I think that's, I think that's what we're trying to avoid. When we're thinking about the base that we have, that's, we're keeping all the teeth in, in the mouth, and everything else is, is just options. That's probably not the best analogy that was ever spoken, but there you are.
Those are, that's good. And again, I'm not falling on the sword here for these standards, I want to give an idea of the types.
I see them as a starting point.
Yeah.
I mean, let's assume they're in place, and we've got a long time to add to them.
It's a way to think about it.
More work sessions.
Maybe it's, well, maybe it should be nineteen feet, maybe it should be twenty-seven feet. I, I haven't gone, I haven't done that kind of thorough.
How about one other, though, for a corner lot? I've seen several of them where on a corner lot where you have development, you might want to encourage some pedestrian space, for some amenities.
Well, I, we do...
As a thought to say, these are the type of things we want to look at.
Yes, I, yeah, I...
Yeah, I think your word's better.
Yes, good.
Intersection lot versus corner lot?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Intersection lot versus a corner lot?
Are you saying they're different things, or...
I'm wondering, you know, Dave and I were saying, if you've got an intersection, and you could have
John's word's better.
A little bit more pedestrian space at an intersection.
Correct, you mean in terms of that build-to line? Yes, agreed. And that's why you don't do a hundred percent for the build-to line, is that you want to allow for both architectural creativity, as well as those little tuck-in places that are nice places.
What's the difference between intersection and corner?
I don't, I think...
Well, I was thinking more of a, of a, of a four-way corner lot than just...
Versus a T.
Or versus going down, you know, you've got a street that comes up to it, a cabbet coming to Islington versus a, an Islington.
There's a lot of it on Islington, yeah.
Oh, pedestrian...
A nodal, a nodal type of...
More important intersection.
Yep. I do have pedestrian amenities here required in both districts.
I guess you could play with it in there.
And I had a thought about outdoor space, too, just thinking about, since we're sort of on that topic. We, we've talked about this in other contexts. Not encouraging space that is sort of dead zone. But outdoor space that is enclosed seems to be more successful, whether with a fence, or buildings, you know, some quasi-quartyard-type effect, or, you know, and I'm not sure of the language to encourage that, but, so that it's not sort of that dead space, just in between buildings, but trying to get buildings closed, or whatever.
One of the things to think about that maybe I haven't made as clear as I could, or maybe is a good policy question, is the form base and the prescriptive approach tend to be contemplating that you are going to be permitting some things outright, and not with a discretionary review. And so that's, I guess, another kind of question here, is if you're going to have discretion, because I would say, I'm not sure I can write a rule that would describe all situations, but that's exactly the kind of thing you might do in a site plan review, or a special permit review, by talking about, you know, if you're looking at the building space. These standards are trying to kind of generalize, that things that should be done by right, but, but in that way, they're easier to do, because you don't have a discretionary process. If you want to add discretionary design review stuff, that's a little bit different. But this is actually kind of going away from discretionary design review, by trying to quantify the important things. So that's one of the reasons that the building forms and site standards are really important. And again, I, this may not be the most comprehensive list, so I'm very interested in. But in, I mean, we could add enclosed space, outdoor space, but it's hard to quantify that, you know? Not dead. So, it just, it just made me think of that, just to remind everybody that, that we're really not talking about a discretionary review process here. We're trying to frame it in a by-right fashion. So, I hear corner lots, and then incentives. Again, I'd be interested in any of your perspective of, are we leaving anything out? Density, residential density, building height, lot area, lot width, coverage, continuous street frontage, and yard dimensions. All of these could be, and it, I've tried to capture whether you're increasing it or decreasing it, that's the incentive part. For example, lot area you might decrease for, the GB zone is actually one that comes up in mind for the Lafayette corridor, because it requires an acre lot, lot size. That's a big, big lot size, so you could have development or redevelopment on a, of a general business on a smaller lot with these standards. And we'd put, we would quantify either a relative percentage, or, or an absolute number, what that could be. But can you think of other incentives? Yeah?
I was thinking parking.
Good.
As long as it's behind the building. I was thinking, well, an incentive is to allow less.
Good. Decrease. It's motivation.
Bigger building and less parking?
Decrease the...
Boy, that makes sense, doesn't it?
It's going to increase congestion.
I realize that, but we're going to, we're trying to be a walking community, and, and I think...
The goal is ultimately less cars.
For corridors, you might think about a maximum. Do you guys, do you guys have a maximum?
I think to do that, we're going to need to make public transportation sexy.
Can I finish the parking comment a little bit? I think, I mean, one of the goals of the community is making it a walking community.
All right.
And, and I think we also have to, we also have to give something up in order to get an incentive. I mean, that's a huge incentive, is parking. Yeah, it's not great to lose a parking space because of the congestion, but maybe we'll gain something better.
Such as a park.
And I also think if we're doing a lot of these pedestrian amenities...
I don't think that's going to happen.
I'm just, I'm just trying to pick it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what it, if...
But form-based zoning, I think, also allows the exchange. I mean, if you're giving them parking, form-based zoning still allows us to do a lot of those pedestrian-friendly things, where before, with our old way of doing things, you just gave them the incentive, they paid into the fund, and maybe they'd use public transportation, because it wasn't based on those forms. But I think what you're getting at is, is correct. We should be becoming more and more of a walkable city. And because we can have those incentives to make it so, then we, we do have some prerogative to reduce parking.
I made another picture on that.
Mm-hmm.
We have our downtown residential where you can't have, you have to have commercial. What we're finding is a lot of that commercial space is very small, and guess what? The rest of it is parking, because nobody wants to buy a condominium that they can't park on.
Yeah.
Parking is going to be just increased in value, made more of a factor. And as you increase residential units, you're going to increase congestion, reduce open space, increase the request for variances, because no one's going to give up their car. You guys can plot all you want about how you're going to give up your car, but if you're encouraging more development, you've got to allow for it. Those two aren't going to go together, in my book.
Yeah.
Don, you've looked for parking spaces.
I fight parking space battle every day. I, I just want to step back just a little bit, and, and I've got, I have some real trouble getting my brain around some of this stuff, and I'll tell you why. You know, when I was a kid, and we would go through school, we were always taught that Pluto is a planet. And now we find out Pluto is not a planet. Likewise, when I came to the planning board, we, I was taught by Arthur Parrott and others that, you know, here's our zoning, and, you know, you can, so many feet back from the edge, and the building's so high, and, I mean, there's some standards. And, and I, I go back to the, to the, to the word squishy, you know, and it's sort of, and you used the term just a minute ago about hard to quantify. These, I wonder, again, I'm just sort of putting up my hand, saying, I, I don't quite get around this, but, but some of this stuff is really, and I know we don't have twenty-two feet minimum, and that's all negotiable and everything else. I wonder about the unintended consequences of this, in that, you know, at least developers now have a way to say, "Here's the lot, what can I put here?"
And make the most money.
And that's, well, make the most money, that's what developers do. I don't have a problem with that. It's, and so now we're going, "Well, you know, if you want to do this, you could do this, and if you want to do that, you could, if you do this, we'll give you a little of that," and then... I just wonder, in terms of the direction, if that's really, if it makes sense. I understand conceptually what we're talking about, but I'm having a hard time sort of really accepting the conceptual piece of this, where a develop, well, again, a developer comes in, and they have a piece of property, they know what they can do. And now it's sort of like, they come in and, and it's, "Let's make a deal."
So you're saying now it's, "Let's make a deal"?
No.
But we're saying that that...
No, no, quite the opposite.
See, what, well, what...
And that's okay, I'm not saying that this is not a good idea, but I'm just having a hard time putting myself in the place of a developer, or an applicant, coming in and, and saying, you know, all of these possibilities.
Well, the review.
Let me, let me try, let me, let me try and clarify, because I, I don't think that there's a lot of, kind of a huge matrix of, of opportunities that you could do. And that's, we've actually tried to make this, your input on this item fairly simple, is we're not suggesting that there be, you know, if you do five of the standards, then you get five incentives. It's, you either, and what, the, the basic question is, should you be able to opt in, or should it be required of everybody?
And I think that's the key one.
And, and that's the first one. But once you opt in, however it is, whether it's you opt, or the city says you will opt, you have to do all of the standards that are required for your area, and you get all of the, you have, you have access to all of the bonuses.
Let me just say this a little differently, because I think that the, the choice, as David said, the choice between mandatory and optional really is key. So, in a way, I would, in some ways, maybe even hide the, the corridor column under the incentives, because if we're going to, if we're going to say this is mandatory, then maybe we don't need to give any incentives. You know, maybe it's just, you know, we, it, it, we're changing the regulations, but they're not really incentives. You know what I mean? They're, they're reducing setbacks, we're making minimum building heights. But they're all very clear standards, just as they, as they are clear today in the existing zoning. So we may not need to offer any additional floor area, or any additional residential units, get the same amount of building, but it's just positioned differently, just oriented differently. The question comes when you're talking about the optional side, because that's when you need, because as Chris said, that's when there's a risk. And so in order to minimize that risk, you have to give something more to encourage people to do that. So that's, that's where they're, and, and I think that's really the trade-off. If, I think that if we, if we went with mandatory, we wouldn't have to give any bonuses or incentives, really. I mean, we'd be changing the regulations to let them do that kind of development, but it wouldn't really be a bonus, it would just be a change in regulation. Talking something different, in most cases. But the, this is, if you have the optional situation, that's where you have to do something to, give something to get something.
I guess we'd have to look at it on a kind of a, once we have that direction, we'd have to look at that.
I like the optional, and that's why I want to bring the conversation back to parking. Maybe you could do both, an incentive for less parking on a commercial, or, or a business, and then incentive for more parking for residential.
The, one of the problems in a retail corridor like Lafayette Road is they're usually building more parking than they need. Well, right.
I'm thinking Islington.
Right, okay, so that makes, it's a big, parking is huge on Islington, not so big on Lafayette.
I'm saying, we, we could just apply it the way we want, on each different area.
I think Tony's got a great idea.
Yeah.
And just to give you a sense of, the parking in the downtown is now flowing into those districts during the day. So as you start to increase what's there, you're setting up a conflict. But yes, this is a model that you can use, and it's going to be the balance ultimately, Don, that we have to look at, and that's where the issue will be.
Well, I have a problem with, just philosophically, with some of the mandatory stuff. I mean, it just, you know, that's...
Well, you have a problem with squishy, and you have a problem with mandatory, so we've got to find your balance.
I don't know what it is.
You have a squishy thing between the two, you know, you're not having decided on one or the other.
Please don't misunderstand me, I'm, I'm not saying this is not a good idea, but I'm just, I'm a little hesitant to embrace it.
It's a lot, and what I usually, what, what usually, when I've worked for develop, on the development side as well, and usually what they said is, "I just want flexibility, and I want to be certain of it." That flexible certainty is something that I think is always a tension in any type of regulation.
And this may be just the nature of the beast, as, as planning evolves, as, as a town gets built out. Maybe this is just the direction we're forced, almost by necessity, to go to. I, I don't know, I just...
Well, these are the, I mean, that's why we're coming to you with some of these policy, kind of big-topic policy directions, because we didn't, I could start to write a form-based section of your code, but I really would be kind of making a bunch of assumptions. So can I get more feedback? I've heard optional, can I get some more feedback about the base, the, the first question, mandatory or optional?
I, I really like the, I was, I really like the idea that Rick was talking about mandatory concepts within the corridor, and then the base plus incentive for the neighborhood, what John said before. I mean, because we've sort of started in that direction. And, I mean, your mention of Pluto makes me think of, you know, the form is from Venus, the code is from Mars, kind of thing. It's just two different ways of, of really looking at the world. And, and I keep thinking about the protection of, of the community, you know?
Right.
That, that you're protecting developers, I'm protecting the community, and that, that's right, there's a...
Oh, that's hardly the case.
No, I, 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 I understand.
I'm not, I'm just shocked you would say that, because that's hardly, that's, that, believe me, there's, anyway.
In the last, in the last few, in the last few seconds, and in our discussion of the northern tier, I observed that you were always coming from the worry about how developers would think about it. And I think that's good, I think different ones of us has to, have to come from, "How is this going to affect different segments of the community?"
And, and that is, this is the fun part of planning, you know?
Exactly.
Those big-picture, but I also try to look at unintended consequences, as best I can.
Right, and I never do. I, I want to put...
Must be a Democrat.
I want to put another incentive thing related to parking, and, and/or mandatory. And I don't know how to deal with this mandatory versus optional, given just what I said about the corridors. But that is, instead of, is building parking garages instead of taking up open space.
Yeah.
And, you know, how do we...
And then hiding them.
And then hiding them, exactly. And then hiding them.
You're talking about in the neighborhood, or...
Well, no, I, I'm thinking of really trying to put that into these, into the corridor, because, I mean, that's a huge conservation. When you think of the issues that we have in most of these areas where the, the corridor's going to be, we're running into, we've run into so often, you know, we don't want that sea of pavement for a lot of different reasons.
I think you've drawn a very good distinction.
Yeah.
Especially on the corridor, because I think that's where most of our attention is. I think when we get on Islington Street, we sort of say, "Well, you know, what we have is good." And here's a irrational thought, perhaps it's about as developed as it can be, and we're just managing what's there. There are limits, but the corridor, we've had years and years of that one-acre zoning. We've seen what it can do, and now we'd really like to remake that. That's a good approach.
Other feedback on whether it should be, and that, what I'm hearing is some difference, depending on the type of corridor, might be, one might be applied and required, and one might be optional with incentives. Anybody else have any input?
I like the optional with incentives.
In all areas, or specific?
Leave that to the applicant, let them look at...
Now with squishy.
Well, no, because they have a choice. They do have, they do have, they have a clear choice. They can look at, they can look at the existing zoning and say, "I have a lot so big, and if I put it back so much, I can do this, and go this, or I can buy into this," and, and leave that to the, to the applicant, whether they want to buy into the form-based zoning.
That's optional.
It would be optional, exactly, but...
The question was all areas, is using all...
All areas, ooh, I'd have to think about that one, I'm not sure.
One of the, one of, an example of, from a totally different context of this, how we look at options and incentives, in Acton, Massachusetts, we did a rezoning of the residential areas, and we, they really wanted to promote cluster development, but they didn't, they couldn't really make it mandatory, so what they did is they doubled the minimum lot size in all of the undeveloped areas, but said you could go back to your original density if you did a cluster, since then every development has been clustered, and it's a very, it's 100% density bonus for cluster, but it's actually 100% density penalty for doing it the old way, is what they did, so you could, you can, you can play that game a lot of different ways.
And was, was the results what they desired?
They love it, they protect, in, in eight years, they protected 400 acres of open space.
That's incredible.
Just, just for the development that occurred in that period of time.
We don't have them.
That's ridiculous.
Detective, we got?
Okay, so I've heard parking as an incentive-
You did?
The, what I was gonna say is the, with the kind of caveat about distinction of rez and commercial.
Okay.
I heard attention to corner lots and pedestrian-oriented amenities, and I guess what I'm hearing, again, I'm, I'm wanting to make sure everybody is having a chance to speak, that you're recommending that we have mandatory along the corridor, but optional on Islington. One of, just to, our recommendation is you do mandatory on both.
I need to separate, Islington is a corridor, to me.
Yes, a neighborhood corridor, let's call it a neighborhood corridor.
Okay.
Okay, let's call it the neighborhood corridor and the big corridor, commercial, commercial, it is a commercial corridor, too.
The one fallacy, though, that comes out of this is, you're assuming a redevelopment, so-
Correct, well, zoning only applies to redevelopment, or development of some kind, so the zoning ordinance wouldn't apply.
Right, so if you pick Islington Street, it's really, it's going to be a very slow process.
Yep.
Unless, unless we consider Islington Street, I was gonna say, unless we consider the area, the node around Bartlett Street, to take down toward the bypass, as, you know, expanding that out, if we decide we're retracting and so forth, then we consider-
Right, I mean, and as the downtown develop, you know, it's just what you said, as the downtown develops, it's going to change everybody's orientation, and the value of those properties is going to change so rapidly.
Right, and, and I guess I want to bring us back to the big picture of, you are revising your entire zoning ordinance, changing your zoning ordinance is the most passive way to affect development, because it only applies to new development or redevelopment, so all of the things that we're talking about are always applying to that. What we are trying to do is say, what is important, do we want to remove any obstacles, or do we want to push some requirements, or do we want to do something that's a little bit of both, which is this optional with incentives. What I wanted to say, Don, I'm sorry, I was cutting you off, was, another way to think about this is like the downtown overlay district, where you added pedestrian features, and, Rick, please stop me if I, if I mischaracterize it, but I think one of the important things in thinking about the form-based zoning is to think about that overlay district, and if it only applied to opt, optionally, that is, that it can be really important that all the character is maintained as new development happens, not just at somebody's option, and again, this gets to my comment in the, in the memo, that the risk is you will not meet your goals, so that if, you know, the transparency of ground four commercial, the, the building up to the sidewalk, pedestrian amenities, location of parking, and I'm talking about along Islington.
So in the case of Islington, we could lose those elements.
That's really important.
If those are not, I mean, this is just the think about, it's very important, this question of whether it's going to be-
Well, that's why the baseline concept is so important, because if you, if you think of our master plan, one of the strongest things in our master plan is improving pedestrian and bike access along Islington, I mean, that was just so clear, and, and even though I don't, I was a little surprised that you labeled it as existing pedestrian amenities good, when that is actually one of the major things we want to improve, so to me, that would be an example of in the baseline, it would be mandatory. The things that are going to have, that are already in our master plan, that are saying what we want for that corridor, I don't see how we could make those optional, there might be other aspects that we could make optional.
Councilor Dwyer, can I just push you for a minute on this issue? So, in this list of standards, what would be that baseline?
What would be that baseline?
For the neighborhood corridor?
Certainly pedestrian amenities.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there's probably a build-to-line kind of thing, I don't know what that line is, but I think there's build-to-line, and I'm just trying to think of what's there now, you know, it, I don't think-
Minimum building height, I think, would be one of those, because you wouldn't want to have tall, short, tall, short.
Building orientation as well.
I don't know, because think, think about that corridor for a minute, and think about how currently building orientation gives a character in some places.
That's what I'm getting at, because now you're, you're, we're talking about that cornish, cornish line, is that correct?
It, no, I'm saying the opposite of what you're saying, I'm saying that lack of, lack of required building orientation gives a character in some of those places, think of some, think of some of the redevelopment that's been done, where, I'm not talking about commercial, because, well, I guess it is commercial, it's an office, some of the things that by their age are not set with their frontage to the street, that's some of the character that is given to that street, so I, I wouldn't include that personally as a required element, I don't think, from a historic standpoint.
What you're talking about, though, you're actually talking about how building orientation, you're not saying that that's bad or anything, but I think what you're getting at is, there are certain aspects of building orientation that are good if they're set back, or a little bit different, well, what's to stop us from adding that into the base regulations, to say, you have to break it up a little over a certain line, and then continue that same line?
Right, and, and this frontage parallel to the street may not, may not be right, but maybe what you're, maybe what it is, is the massing of breaking up of massive buildings and doing something like that.
Yeah.
Would that be more appropriate in a newer city? I mean, Portsmouth is so diverse, and so many different areas.
Yeah, I, um, kind of depends.
I think some of these, I mean, I would be, I would pick a different list depending on where you're talking about.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
On Islington, you mean?
Absolutely.
And I'm trying, I'm having a hard time thinking about anything but Islington, because to me, Islington's like the 911 area right now, it really needs the most help.
And if we're talking about overlays, then it's going to be site-specific.
Isn't that funny, because I don't feel that way.
I'm just, it's probably more of the traffic is why I'm thinking that, but, you know, I'm trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly.
So we're going to increase development, whereas we got a corridor, Route 1, that is, it's like, doesn't invite you to cross this, I'm just puzzled, Islington Street has done quite well for 250 years in some ways.
But it's the number one, it's, it's like, like Chris said, it's the number one thing in here.
Yeah, pedestrian amenities.
Pedestrian amenities.
Not development amenities.
Yes, I see them the same, trying to make the development pedestrian-friendly.
I don't know, with the site review process on one building, we got the building off of the right-of-way, so that we could actually have a conforming sidewalk, we did that under the existing, moved them back after an incursion of 100 years.
The pedestrians in that area, I think, would be more residential pedestrians, the pedestrians in the downtown have come from out of town, and they're off to buy like a purse or something.
We're getting off point, I don't, I don't mean that.
Does it, does it make sense, I know we're going to have another follow-up, does it make sense to possibly have an Islington Street work session?
Yeah, I think that-
I mean, we're trying to take five areas, and, right, Islington Street, and I sense Chris wants to get through this, and we're kind of cutting her off at the moment.
No, it's fine, I mean, I, I-
I understand that, but I think you need to pick a couple hot buttons and just focus on the next work session.
I agree, that would make it a lot easier.
It only.
Well, I, I just want to, what I'm hearing is some variance of opinion, is I guess the way I would characterize it, and, and Councilor Dwyer, I didn't at all mean to pick on you, but, you know, in saying, well, which one, which are the crucial ones, I think you're identifying a couple things that would be required, and, and maybe some that aren't, so, I mean, I, we can, I can take some of this direction, and trying to, we'll see how we get with some of the other stuff, and try and kind of give you back what, what I heard, and then we could do that by, by corridor.
In terms of the Islington Street, David, do you know where Nancy is on the RFP for a corridor study for Islington Street?
We've gotten beyond the hair-tearing stage, so it's actually pretty close to moving forward.
Because I'm just wondering how this would, if there's going to be another study about that, how this-
I think our timing is good to coordinate, I see this more as an experiment, are we comfortable with this approach, and I think we're all saying, yes, we can see some good in it, and the devil's going to be in the details.
I'll get to the details, okay.
And- Tony, more parking?
No, as soon as we get the details, I mean, I imagine we're going to have some form of a public hearing on this.
Oh, you'll have so many public hearings, they'll all matter.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that, but, you know, it's, there gets an inertia when we develop this thing, and it's hard to change from it, so I think that the public could brought it in earlier rather than later.
Yeah, actually, and what we recommend is meetings with stakeholders, property owners, the public, there's a lot of things to discuss, because first, there's just the explaining the concept, I mean, it is a different paradigm, so there's just, let's talk about what it is, and then let's talk about how it affects you.
Are you talking meetings versus public hearings, I mean, there's a distinction?
We can allow public to comment during a work session.
We've done it all the time.
Yeah, but I'm thinking more like the listening, the Portsmouth listen sort of process.
Right, when we did the, when we brought the master plan out to the neighborhoods, and you could-
I think that also goes back to what you were talking about during the master plan process, and redoing the zoning ordinance, we all deal with the zoning ordinance every day, there are few people who deal with it all the time, and everybody deals with it at least once, so first, in many ways, we may be introducing the whole concept of zoning in general to some people, and then saying, oh, and by the way, we're deciding to change our mind and do it this way now, hopefully as stakeholders, if we're dealing with just those people on, on Islington Street, the owners and residents, I think maybe they'll know a little bit enough about their own zone, where we can say, this is how this affects your zone, without trying to talk to them about the history of zoning.
And not to push us to get through to the end, but one of the things about an overlay district is that wherever, the overlay district supersedes the base, the underlying district, but where it is silent, the underlying districts will continue, so there may be some things that we don't get to, that, that just aren't important to this discussion, and then the base zoning actually does kick into place, so it, not only how does this change your zone, but, you know, what does it add to your district?
Well, one of the things that this discussion has helped me to think about is that there'd be no way that we could think of the Islington corridor plus the surrounding neighborhoods, because the issues that we have brought up just recently, just are dealt with entirely differently in the character of even one block off, so I think that, to me, that helps me to make that decision, and not to try to go there at this point, we really have to think of, I mean, we might go there in a different way, but we can't make it fit.
I think we're calling it neighborhood corridor.
Right.
I'm, I'm going to beg your forgiveness board and ask that we move on to the number three, and say that this item had some resolution, but Rick and I will kind of go back and ponder a little bit about how we go forward from here. All right, now if you think your brain was spinning already, so this is a plan, because we get you warmed up, and now you're ready for page six and seven. This topic is addressing, what are the appropriate ways to regulate, and this really gets to the basic way of regulating zoning that Rick talked about, the balance of uses versus building form, and what we're proposing here in the form-based approach is to blend those two, and we're taking uses and actually somewhat simplified use categories, and that's what you see in table three, and again, I've called it a mock-up, because I'm not trying to capture every single use, or say that this is exactly what I'd say, but I took some of the major commercial and residential types, and have added them into this, of course, there would be more, but just to give you a sense, and again, this is where you need your appendix, the building forms are linked to the, to the districts that would, that are present in Islington Street and the Lafayette corridor, so, and again, I'm, we're really basing this on the way that the South Weymouth Naval Air Station in Massachusetts did their use table, with some of their definitions, and again, their forms, and are proposing that, so in the, should we be going forward, the form-based district, or districts, or overlay, or overlays, that these have in them, in addition to the standards that you just looked at, which are some of the basic design standards and site standards, that the uses be simplified, and again, have this, you apply the form, the building forms, in, in the way of this table, so, let me walk through kind of an example, and so the, the input I'm looking for you is, after you thoroughly understand this table and take the quiz, is this kind of the right approach, and again, I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, we're trying to kind of move forward, is this the way to move forward, we may have to come back, if you don't, and then the kind of follow-up question is, we have these simplified use categories, and does this make sense in, in form-based zoning? So let me just take, take you through an example, just, just to walk you through, because I think, for me, that's the easiest way to think about it. So, let's, let's think about the corridor, let's think about Lafayette corridor, just, just bear with me, so you're maybe a property owner on Lafayette corridor, and you want to build Rick's office supply store, which has a really big red sign with white letters, and he wants to put in a, it's an anchor retail, and so, the, the principal use that he want, and, and he also wants to put in, he's a developer, and he wants to put in some Starbucks, and a spa, and a hair salon next to it, so he comes in, and he says, okay, well, my, my use is going to be retail, if this is, let's, let's just say that this is required for his, you know, he's in the, he's in the form-based district, and he does not have an option, he must do this, and so, he is an anchor retail, he wants to build what you might call a shopping center, you know, with an anchor, like Rick's office, with some other stores attached to it, again, the typical form, if you want to think about this, would be kind of, you know, maybe one, maybe two anchors with some stores in between, behind parking, okay, but he's different, he's in Portsmouth form-based corridor overlay zone, and so if you look at, again, I have this anchor retail sheet, he has to bring his building up to the street, does not have to be a corner, has to come up to the street, the parking has to be located behind or to the side, the anchor retail is the primary use, it's permitted in general business, OR, or business, so this kind of building, and this, so the GB and the OR, the general business and the office research, is the primary zoning along Lafayette corridor, so he, he is a permitted use, and so he's set, but he has to go back to then these standards, so his use is allowed, his form, building form, has to look like this, and if you kind of look at some of the things down here, again, remember this is somebody else's zoning, the, the standards that we just finished not agreeing on, but talking about, these are the kinds of things that would fill in this thing, and interwoven in here, just for the record, would be, if there are incentives or bonuses, would be a height, you know, that might be higher than it is now, for example, so if he wants to build residential on top, he could, he could do that, but, but right now, he just wants to build retail, so the basic location would be required to be different, it would have that 50% or whatever percent up to the building line, it would have a parking behind, location of parking behind, he would have to provide pedestrian amenities, he would have to have the primary entrance locate, oriented to the street or a corner, as is shown here, he would have to have a minimum of 50% transparency on the windows, if you can think of those big office supply stores, they don't have any transparency, except for the building entrance, for the most part, so it would have to be an active storefront.
Can you define the transparency, does that mean wall space versus windows?
Windows, windows, and it can be display windows, doesn't have to be totally transparent, I mean, that is up to you guys, but doesn't have to be all the way transparent, so, that's just kind of to take you through, and maybe Rick's site is actually, it's 30,000 square feet, it's not an acre, so he doesn't need a variance, because we've reduced the lot size, the minimum lot size to half an acre, as part of our bonus program, or as part of this, if he does all of these things, so that's a way to kind of understand this table, at least in the, in the kind of primary way. Let me take another example and ask you to go to the next page, the neighborhood commercial. General services, which in Weymouth is defined fairly broadly, it is hair salons, cleaning and laundry, actually, some of the things that Rick would want, actually, let's go back to Rick's project, Rick would want to be, an accessory use would be permitted also in- Actually, some of the things that Rick would want, actually, let's go back to Rick's project. Rick would want to be an accessory use, would be permitted also in the GB, and is permitted as a secondary use to anchor retail form. Those secondary uses have to be also street front as well. Here's an example of where this use table is different from yours. Your use table, how many pages is it, Rick? 50 pages of use table? So very detailed, differentiates a hair salon from a spa, from a dry cleaners. You know, and these are 5,000 square foot service retail businesses. And so the form-based approach says, we don't really care if it's, you know, Jasmine's Hair Supply or Echo Cleaners. We don't really care, but it's a use that's allowed in this building form. As long as you meet these standards for what the form is gonna look like, we're okay with that blend of uses. And in particular, I think on the commercial uses is the, and especially kind of, again, for this corridor, the big corridor example in general business, you know, it doesn't, you know, have to have a long list of uses. The uses kind of work together. So I'm gonna pause and stop for questions. I just tried to give you a couple examples.
Can you actually get through one section without taking questions?
No, I just haven't stopped talking yet. So I'm just gonna pause and let you ask questions or respond, Rick. If you have anything to add.
I think this, the one thing I would add is this does kind of show you that it does complicate the ordinance, because you're fundamental ordinance, and you've got this option, or if it's an option or no. I guess the, what we want to do is we would want to, within the constraints that we have here of something that's pretty complicated, we want to make it as simple as possible because we want to have it not so different from the rest of the ordinance that just becomes not understandable. At the same time, we were going down through some of these uses today, and again, these are just sample uses, but many of the uses are uses that are already defined in the existing ordinance or will be defined in the revised ordinance. So there are just a few things like general services. It's a new kind of lumped category that we have to think about. So it is, it doesn't change the uses. In many cases, it won't have to change.
It's not a radical change. But I think, and just a second, Tony, I think that this kind of simplified uses is, in some ways, it may be kind of soft, but is an incentive to development because it's not kind of caring so much about, do you, you know, do you fit or not? And so for somebody who's doing a development, your lease parameters, for example, for Rick's Office Supply Store, is, he has a greater, it could be a Starbucks, it could be a spa, whatever.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this, so I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna create my own example, and maybe you can follow.
That's a good, great idea.
There's a piece of property at the end of the street where I live, Dennett Street, in the corner of Dennett and Woodbury. It's a vacant lot. It's currently zoned residential. It's, there was a proposal years back to putting a museum there, and they, it got denied through the variance process, or no, anyways, it didn't go through. Walk me through here. Now, we don't really care. It's a museum. We now more care that it, what the form is.
Well, is this a residential street?
It's a residential prop, zone property.
Yeah. Well, we're not, we haven't really outlined a lot of the form standards for residential. Can I put that same museum on Islington Street?
Which is clearly in the district.
Sure, sure.
Let's say, maybe it was in an apartment, the A-zone on Islington Street. And let's say museums aren't allowed in that. I don't know if they are. But it, you know, we'd go through institutional uses, which aren't included here, but let's say that they, you know, these institutional uses were permitted. And it wasn't public, so it doesn't get left out there. The, what would be of concern is what are the building, what, what, what building form are institutional uses? This doesn't have one, but let's say, maybe we say that institutional uses fit in, maybe ankle retail or neighborhood commercial. Mixed, yeah, they, well. Well, the office commercial, right. There is the office, office commercial. Let's say it's that. That's the next page after neighborhood commercial.
Now, where is this?
On the Weymouth, right after the neighborhood commercial, on your, the building types. So it's gonna be a certain building or building form, and what, what we kind of care about is, as we create these two different districts, is that the building forms that are allowed and the standards that are behind the building forms match that district. We do care about uses. We care maybe a little bit, yeah, less. So for example, you know, and so Islington Street is served by public transportation. It's, it's a collector's street. So traffic, you know, may not, traffic increase may not be such a big deal, which may have been in the residential, but its building form is important. If they could have made it look like a house, perhaps, you know, kind of from a form-based perspective, the museum use wouldn't have been so bad. I think in residential areas, it gets tricky when you put in a non-residential use because you have a lot of other things that are not residential in type. Again, we're not moving forward residential form-based right now, other than a apartment.
And on that point, is, I think this is a great idea, but I have a concern at the buffer when you switch from, from a commercial zoning or office zoning to residential. Is that that piece of property that, you know, that's on the office side, what happens with that?
Yeah.
That's the one that I'm concerned with, that where the line gets drawn, and now you've, you've added these, how much uses that can be used in there? You know, I'm trying to think of like, example of like alcohol sales next to residential.
I think that's one of the reasons that we're saying that this is doable for these discrete areas that you are looking at in very specific locations that have an identifiable area, and that you're looking at those locations, the drawing of the district boundaries very carefully. It's not, and that's one of the reasons, just to jump ahead, we're recommending an overlay, again, not a base district, is that we don't think you could characterize it like a base district as something that could be, you know, here in the city, or here, here, here. We're saying, you know, a neighborhood commercial is Islington Street, maybe Maplewood.
And a base district is assuming that we've got form-based zoning throughout the city.
A base district generally means it's applicable, applicable. So I think that that issue about more uses is mitigated by the fact that these are very specific locations. I do think along the Lafayette corridor, there are some adjacencies that we need to look at carefully when you're looking at where's the boundary, but those zoning district boundaries are already there, and I, so there is residential that it buts general business. It exists now. But I think we'd look at that when we're looking at the mix of uses. Anybody else comment on this?
Did I, I think, based on what you just said, then I maybe misunderstood something you said at the beginning of this discussion. Might going in this direction have then some effect on the overall way we look at uses? Not only in, because, that might it, might it help us rethink uses and that we would try to move, I mean, obviously not as directly, but we try to take a step in the direction for our non-overlay form-based areas.
I just got bingo because you asked the question, for the third time, you've asked the question that I told Rick, somebody's gonna ask this question. I think that's a very, I think that's a smart question. I don't know that I know the answer to that. I think that what Rick said is, so far, we would, if we go in the direction where we're, as Rick is working on simplifying or changing the use, the overall use table, it's not gonna be as simple as this or as grouped, but there are, we would obviously correlate the definitions of use categories as much as possible, and many of these, even just as, you know, kind of I pulled in the mock-up, exist in your current ordinance, and we wouldn't change their meaning. But there are these kind of groupings that would exist.
I think one of the things that I've noted as I've thought about this is that in the current ordinance, the use regulations, I talked to David and Lucy about this, is the use, the use regulations are defined in such a way that they include not just uses, but dimensions and hours of operation and distances from things. So it's much more, not, you know, right down to the details, use table than most communities have. Most communities have just lists of use, and they deal with those other things in other places, and because of history, you've sort of accumulated stuff in the use table. And one of the things that I'm trying to do is I go through the use tables, try to separate those things out to simplify the use table, and I, there are many themes that run consistently through the use table. Certain things are always supposed, are 200 feet away from a residential district. You find them in this, with this use in this district, this use in this district. Just combine those, perhaps. Certain things are always limited to eight, operation of eight to eight or something. But the, what I've found as I've been thinking about this is that the, the actual process of trying to create the building form in some ways replicates that, that idea of trying to limit occupancy, restaurants and bars and so forth, and certain occupancy thresholds in your, in your existing zoning. So having certain size thresholds might have an analogy there. So it may not be as different because you're already doing an awful lot of regulating, you're going beyond land use and regulating how people operate their businesses. And, and I think that the, so if we move away from how people operate their businesses to what impact the business has in terms of its location, the site, and size, and so forth, it's getting, you know, we're dealing with similar types of things, and so we may be able to get to merge them together. It's just gonna be a long process.
It's certainly something to think about. And just to get at a little bit, you can see, and again, this is based on the Naval Air Station's use table, and Tony, you had, you were looking at the right table at the very end. You will see that it's somewhat kind of similar to their use table, which did this cross-referencing. And they do have some things that they, that they put in as additional limitations, such as ground floor only, you know, for cabins, for example. If you're gonna be in an office building, you can't have a club that's gonna be, you know, all the way up.
I think you just stole my question. I'm thinking of a really, really nice-looking Malibu beach club. You know, where, that's, that was, part of my concern is that in that corridor, we had a nightclub that had serious use problems, where we didn't even have a definition, we had to create a definition of that type of club at that time. So my concern was that as we're going through this, if we can add different things and raise some of the concerns and maintain those kind of uses, that's probably what we're looking at.
Again, I really tried to characterize this table as a mock-up, something to try and explain how it would work, because it's a fairly complex cross-referencing system, especially when we're, you're also just thinking about what those standards of the building forms are.
What's apartment podium?
It's something from South Weymouth, and it's got certain design features.
Oh, is there a graphic of it?
There is. It is. One of their apartments. It's a little bit different from apartment commercial, although they, to my eye, to be honest, they look very similar. Oh, it's not in this copy. It might have been in your audit. Anyway, it, it's a diff, I believe it's a different construction type. One of the things that's, form-based districts tend to be derived by architects, and so sometimes, not that I don't always agree with architects and engineers all the time, and attorneys, but that may be a distinction that we don't need here in Portsmouth, unless I'm convinced otherwise. But I believe it's a different construction type of building. Let me pull an example that is included here in this table at the bottom of page three, the assisted living. Just to kind of show you that while this is permitted in all of the base districts, there are no form types for it, either as a principal use or a secondary use, so that the design standards for it default to the underlying zoning district. But it's put in here clearly as a permitted use in all of these districts. So the use is permitted, but there are no building forms or designs. That's how Weymouth did it, and it doesn't have to be how you do it, but it is an example where you actually have, you're really wanting to be very clear about a use so that it's not lost, but you don't have a form for it. And I believe that probably if we, were we to go through this table into your use table, we might have a variety of things that would be like that.
No, there's a place you could limit parking.
I don't, they have a lot of employees, actually. Assisted living facilities are complex. Yeah. Okay, all right. I'm getting the hook.
I'd like to wrap up here by nine, just so that.
So does anybody wanna step out and talk about whether or not this makes sense, or would you like to, I'm seeing some nods. Would you like to?
Yeah, I think this makes sense. You know, obviously, you said this is just, just a mock-up, but there's certainly things we would change about it in terms of forms to add or remove. Institute, I mean, actually, it's interesting, the example that Tony came up with, because that was one of the things I thought, being in Portsmouth. Museum is definitely, I mean, not necessarily as an individual category, but some kind of way to think about that use. Social services, you know, yoga studio, whatever. I'm sort of thinking of all these odd uses that, some of which may be easily folded in the terms that we already have, but.
Yeah, I think perhaps the conversation probably would have, would have gone along a little bit smoother and maybe more focused if we, I think the question, should, should we be doing this as an overlay district or a separate base? Unless we're moved on completely.
That's a, that's a two one.
We really debated whether that was number one or number four.
You know, yeah, you know, and, well, I would agree with you. I think the sense that we've all talking about Islington Street, and a lot of the stuff that we're talking about is, what you do in an overlay is vastly different than what you do just eliminating the zoning ordinance and coming up with form-based zoning. So, you know, we all want to talk about Islington Street. We can't talk about Islington Street. There are forms and intersections and different, you know, corridors that we want to talk about, and sculpted rooftops, and I think a lot of form-based zoning is very site-specific. So for us to really get in a conversation about this, I really, I agree with you, John. We really have to have some sort of work session about specifically Islington Street. And I think we may put a little bit of fine-tuning on a lot of the conversation. It won't sound so, so chaotic at that point. I think we're all running on the same track, but when we're talking about different sections of the city, it's really hard to nail things down, especially in something so site-specific as form-based zoning.
And in part, I think, I mean, I've gotten some good direction on several of these. It's important for us to have this introductory discussion.
That's great.
You know, we had a kind of general, you've had several layers of discussion, and now, and each layer, each discussion is gonna get more and more detailed as we go forward, until somebody, until you all say, stop what you're doing, and don't go any further.
Can we do that? Just kidding.
Does anybody feel differently? I'm gonna just move right on to page eight, nine. Does anybody feel differently about the overlay district versus base district than either our recommendation or what we've just heard here?
Well, I think the fact that it's number four as opposed to number one, you know, we have sort of been led ever so gently to one take on this.
Well, we debated whether or not talking about the characteristics and general locations wouldn't be more open, but anyway, we're, we're happy that.
But I think, yeah, the logic.
I think if we get through this and then we can wrap up just with the consensus on, because I, my fear is that if we allow public comment and we don't at least
Oh, absolutely.
get on one track that we can defend or discuss, I think it's gonna be an endless circle.
Oh, yeah.
Again, we wanted to come with you with some of these open-ended ideas, because if we came with a draft, we would have made, you know, a lot of these decisions and not even given you, given them to you as options. So just, if you bear with me, Council Dwyer, page 10, 11, and 12, talk about streetscape standards for form-based districts and the importance of the design of the right-of-way, and some of the things that I think are important. These are things where there really is different approaches, whether you have people pay into a fund if you're in an overlay district, because you're eventually gonna do a general streetscape improvement, whether or not you just mesh these designs in with any design process that's gonna go forward. For example, the Islington Street design study, Lafayette Road, if it gets passed. So I just wanted to put these ideas down because often that, the land use zoning discussion gets a little bifurcated from the transportation design, and this is really an instance where they're clearly linked. You really can't talk about applying form-based districts, especially along corridors, unless you're talking about how the right-of-way is designed. So I wanted to just make sure this was in here in some way, understanding that the zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily, won't necessarily implement it, but I don't want it to be lost. I've put some illustrations in of curb bulbs and something called slip lane, which is really appropriate for that big corridor, which preserves some pedestrian, it's kind of an idea about how you might do pedestrian improvements on those big intersections, but not impede traffic flow. big intersections, but not impede traffic flow. And then finally, on page 12, I'm leaving you with, um, a picture, a photo illustration of corridor improvements, just to kind of get at this point about the, just how important it is for the adjacent land uses, um, as to the design of the corridor sidewalk improvements. You may, may not do bike lanes. You may not do a median, but it does make a difference about, um, how the actual right-of-way is designed. So that's just kind of a...
Don't the trees in the bottom look like they've been about 15 years apart, from the top to the bottom?
Hmm, yeah. This is a project that I worked on in, um, on a corridor study in, uh, in Oregon that, um, unfortunately, we were doing this project, and meanwhile, the state came through and did a big improvement project and did nothing, anything like this. Just not to believe you with pessimism, but supposed to be an optimistic thinking about street design. Um, so, John, shall I turn back to you, give you some direction about what?
Yeah, I guess we can just wrap up. I, I think that the next thing, David, is, I guess is, I'd like to have another separate work session, if we could, just kind of narrowing, I, I guess, talk about hitsman. And mine's, mine's kind of starting to whirl around, going from fluid to every other thing, so...
We're the only, we're the only board or commission with catchphrases.
Oh, okay. Um, but I'd like to have at least, I think Islington Street, if, if that's a consensus, at least, I'd like to get the, the fit and the form down for that.
Yeah.
And we can kick that around for a while and find out what works, what doesn't. And then, just like we've done before, to apply to other areas in town.
Yeah. It's got a nice blend of residential and commercial that we can use.
We're going to, we're going to just...
This is still at the conceptual stage.
Well, heavens, yeah.
Right. But my thing is, but before we get public comment, I think we need to defend what we've got here. And I think we hit a home run with the, you know, 50 to 40 feet. We went back to what we should have, and I think on the council end of things, everybody agreed this board did their job.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well, I, I think, I, I really look forward to that session. I think it will be important that we have good visual support for that, since this is largely a visual, uh, discussion.
Site-specific, too.
And, and, so that we can actually be referring to, whether it's just a bunch of PowerPoints, but also that we may, that we, that, whether we take it upon ourselves or whatever to individually do some walking, but that we have some ideas of how we're going to be breaking it up for discussion purposes, not for anything else. And that as, that we, we take our own real good feeling for what that is, because we're talking pedestrian. It's going to be important to get the pedestrian feel of it. And as you started to say, "Well, it's different from here to here," but maybe we even have some, um, kind of rough, uh, groupings, uh, along the Islington Corridor that we use for our discussion, so that we, we're not talking past each other, but we really focus in.
But the snow might be gone in a month, and we could probably take some pictures.
It'll be gone Tuesday.
We'll do a six to seven sidewalk.
Well, we could do that.
But tonight's day, grab a cup of coffee. We'll walk out.
Just so we really...
Meet here at seven.
Yeah.
And I think if, if the public comes in and says, "Jeez, you know, we, we didn't do it all sitting from a table here that..."
Right.
"Well, you know, we decided to ride a certain section." I agree. Anything else we want to see before the next work session that planning can put together, or? One thing I see on these that, that I wish, I wish the City of Portland could do, or, and I know it just, the WITs don't permit, is a separate striped bike, bike lane.
I know.
I mean, I do a lot of biking, and, boy, I'll tell you, it's, this time of year's not bad, but you get a couple months in a month, and it's exciting.
Yeah, I'd, I'd bike a lot, too, and go up Islington Street. I don't.
You burn a lot more calories in the summer than you do right now, that's for sure.
It's, I'll tell you, it's, you'd go up Islington Street, you're taking your life in your hands. I usually cut over and go upstate or go, you know, way over and just avoid it at all costs. So you're right.
Actually, often, I think for bike planning, they will take you off of the main arterial, um, if it's narrow like Islington. It's put you somewhere else.
Some of those get you from downtown to Old Navy agreement, of course, when there's only, you know, you can do middle, you can do Islington. There's not many.
The board could help me, though, in one area, just so that when the press calls tomorrow, do we decide that we're emphasizing an overlay or mandatory? Is that still a...
Still under discussion.
Still under discussion, specifics to Islington Street, as I understand it.
Throw in Don's term of squishy.
Yeah.
I think that'll...
Yeah, they'll love that.
If there's no other comment, I mean, right close to nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Everybody can comment out on the snow again.
So moves.